Good morning. Called a meeting to order. Laura, you want to introduce your guest and say why he's here?
Darren Bates is here today to talk about, um, data disaster. It's a software that a lot of the counties use. And we have desperately needed that inventory records that he has for state board council.
I'll tell you a little quick here. Been in, I've had my company for 16 years. It's me and one other guy that we used to work for a company that dealt with county government that they went bankrupt and we were with them for five years. So we've been dealing with county government since 1998. This map, all the green counties is where I have an excise program, including your county. I also, everything I do is by word of mouth. So I don't go out and sell. I am requested to come in and I then present what I have. So this is for all your excises, watercraft, aircraft, car rental, miscellaneous income. So here I have my excise. Now these are all the counties, the different colors are the different options that I have available. The basic one is what you need is the yellow, which is your tax data online analyzing if there are problems with your tax system. I get to understand by all the counties, learn from them is where vendors have shortcomings. Because, you know, they're the vendor, they're trying to understand and work with the counties, but they don't always listen to the day-to-day operations. So what I do is I look at if someone removed a homestead deduction, but someone also, that also had a over 65 circuit breaker where you are, an over 65 means you can't pay 1% of last year's bill. Well, for some reason they decided they pulled more out of their retirement fund, which then disqualifies them for that, but a little checkbox didn't get unchecked. My system looks at that and say, well, if there's no homestead, there's no over 65, why are you still getting a 2% break? So you're losing money because of simple software errors. And I do the conversions for the two companies, Lau and Exoft, from MVP, the old system that you still have, over to their system because they know that I know everything about taxing since I've been doing it for over two decades. Anyways, the yellows also has inventory asset depreciation capability. So it inventories all your stuff here. You set as a council commissioners and auditors a limit of what is 1,000, 2,000, 5,000. What is an asset as opposed to like this computer, it's just an inventory. But you want to track it so that if you had a tornado, water, fire damage, that you can get to the insurance company and say, oh, here's what we lost in this building if it was lost, you know, to fire damages. Plus the state board council, state of Indiana is requiring you to make sure you maintain your assets now and have depreciation so there's more openness and transparency, as they call it. Which this year they're not really auditing, they're reviewing what you've done for assets for 2020 and 21. But next year they're going to start really writing you up and make a big PR issue about that what counties are not following the rules and regs of not just managing your assets but depreciating it. So that's why I've been slammed here in the last four months because the state board council have their auditor's conference and told them that, you know, they're start auditing and reviewing that. A year and a half ago, I had 13 counties, as you can see, I have 41 counties now. Again, calling me, emailing me saying, how soon can I get the inventory? The blue ones down here are the yellow, but they enhanced it. They wanted some help with their, as you, you're the council, I just remember that. Also you should deal with commissioners. Council, you trying to do budgets, you're trying to figure out why are we not getting the revenue that we're supposed to? Because of circuit breaker losses. Do, all of you understand what circuit breakers are? The 1%, 2%, 3%? I see most, two of you didn't say yes. So the bottom line is 1% on homes, 2% on rentals and long-term healthcare and agricultural land, can't pay 2% more than the gross amount. And then finally businesses, industrial, commercial, and anything that's not attached to your home, a gazebo, secondary garage, anything that's not attached to your home is actually considered a cap three. That's what most people don't know, homeowners don't know. They wonder why their bills so high and why did they get 1%? Oh, I'm sorry, that secondary garage is a cap three, not a cap one. So anyways, what I do is try to help you figure out how you might be able to not hit so many caps. About your level of county up north, a lot of them have lift credits, income tax credits going to tax bills. Do you?
Yes.
Okay. So do you send it to homeowners only? Do you send it to all properties?
It's all properties.
Okay, there. I don't have your data at this point. If I had your data, every night at midnight, it pulls your MVP data, seven days a week, three to six, five days a year, barring that your internet's working to my Google server. The bottom line is it's all there public. So in your case, you're county 61?
Correct.
I wrote Fountain County here. So your next door neighbor, I go to tax data and right here they've got 16,408 parcels. I can search by a parcel number, a name or an address. And I'll just do Smith here. And one of these River Row, that sounds like a home. I don't know anyone here. Any of you have property in Fountain County?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I use you as example?
Really?
It's all public here. Do you have a house number, land address or anything? All right.
Yeah, 626 Walnut.
Six?
626. I don't bring this.
626. Okay. What's your last name?
Patton.
Oh, the last one. There we go. So it Thomas shows 2005, 2009, 2010, it shows all the different changeovers. And it shows the balance in the assessment. There, it's a cap two, there's a rental. And you got a non-res improvement, a cap three, you had a little shed or a barn apparently on it. So your taxes are $1,198.38. In their county, they've got PTRC also. On their case, they're targeting homeowners. That's why the cap one up there is .0572, where their PTRC like you're doing is .01105. This, it tries better than your tax system, your tax bills. This gives a step-by-step how the taxes work. So in your case, you are, taxes are $1,065, but you're limited to $956. So you are hitting a cap, you're protected. So in this case, the lit money that they're giving across the board, PTRC, isn't helping you at all. And at that point, it's wasting the county's income tax to, well, it's not completely wasting. The county as a whole gains that $109 back. But a homeowner that's not hitting a cap, all this is doing is reducing the amount that the person is paying out of their pocket. So in your case, they're gaining money from the PTRC, but a homeowner or a business is not because the rate is only point, 2.25. So a business at 3% is not hitting a cap, they're just getting lower bills. A homeowner's with a homestead deduction, supplemental deduction, mortgage deduction to start with, if they have veterans, a blind and disableds even more, it reduces that. So a homeowner, it literally takes a 3% to 3.1% rate to even hit a cap. So in your case, you're throwing money across the board at every tax bill. Meaning the cap, more likely if you're like Fountain County here, a lot of small counties in this area are, your cap three and cap one, all you're doing is reducing their tax bills. Meaning the income taxes lowering you personally what you're paying, but it's not helping your revenue stream. And this is what my program does, is analyze that and finds a better way. Instead of just throwing the money across to everything, should you target rentals and agricultural land, cap twos, to help bring that revenue in? Or better yet, just do away with your credits and implement a PSAT, a 911 fund, a public safety fund, increase or create a commissioners, was economic development, CEDF fund. It doesn't have, the old way was you give it to businesses. You don't do that anymore. What you do is make a CEDF fund that you can pay pretty much any bill you want. You can apply it to your perf that you're paying, you can insurance, repairs, HVAC. The bottom line is a CEDF fund can be paid for much, most anything in the last five to eight years. So again, what I do is try to tell you how to utilize that income tax better. So this is what the tax site looks like at that point. What I can do in your case, as you saw your bill, come on. There we go. Your bill at the end result was $1,067. People can, as you can see, we go online and I can say, okay, what if? So all the calls that people come in or people come into the county and want to ask questions to the trader, to the auditor's assessor, what if I sold this or what if I made it a homestead? You know, what would my taxes be? Well, they don't have to come in and ask the questions anymore because they can go online, what has changed it if you actually sold it to someone? And remove that. Now the secondary garage is still, it's still a cap three, but the home, the rental became a home. And we would also put in there that whoever bought it also got a mortgage deduction on it. And they don't have to know all this stuff because down here I give an example, there's a 3,000 is a mortgage, over 65 a blind disabled. So again, I try to put in layman's terms what that is. So instead of $1,067, oh, come on. The bill would have been $311. So in your case, if you sold it off to someone, you can say, hey, look, you're not going to pay the taxes I am, $1,000, it's going to be $311 at that point. So again, this is a nice tool to stop the people coming in, stop the people calling because that's what a lot of people want. There's a free floating one if I went to the main menu. You can go over and do a tax calculator, you can say, okay, what's, if they sold a bare piece of land in a certain district, they can pick that, they can put in how much they want to build a house, they can do a calculation, put the mortgage deduction in and say, oh, if I built that house this year, last year for this year, here's what the taxes would be on that. So again, a lot of questions come up in that respect on counties. So now if I go back to, I was dealing with yesterday, DuBois. Asset inventory management then. As you can see, this menu's quite long. There's a place for calculate circuit breakers, there's asset management, there's app to pay, application to pay, record to collection. All your departments collected, not all, but most of your departments collect fees. The courts collected through their Odyssey system. You got health department, you know, for birth and death records and immunization. Audit department is transfers and sales disclosures, you got to report. Part of the money goes to state, part of it goes to CU. The point is this system has the ability that you can create your own receipt. So instead of maybe buying those receipt books, three-part, little forms, you don't have to buy them anymore. You go in here and you can generate a receipt, it looks professional, it has your county logo on it, and it gathers it up by the day, the week, the month, whatever the department wants to do, and then take it to the treasurer. It'll add up all those receipts and fill out the proper fee list to the fund and the accounts as the auditor cares about. Departments don't care about the fees in the account, so they care about, I had a birth record, I have a death record, I got immunization, I got 20 different fees. But the auditor says, oh, all those get dumped into one fund, one account. And they can't seem to get the numbers right. My system locks it down and identifies, all those fees get into these different things and they can track, how much are they making per different fee? And then, and all this is remotely done from their office. They don't go into the auditor's office and say, hey, I need this done now. Drop everything you're doing because then I got to go to the treasurer's office. No, they fill it out, submit it, and then the auditor gets an email saying, oh, yeah, everything looks fine. So they click approval. If they had a problem with it, they would type in why they would do it, they submit it back and wherever the department is, whether it's remote office here or at the main office there, you don't have to go to the auditor and interfere with the work they're trying to get done because they got an email back and say, log in and find out what went wrong. Otherwise, go see the treasurer and give them the real money. By the time they're printing out a receipt, the auditor already got an email saying, hey, now put in your financial. But then the health department doesn't go to the auditor to get their copy of it, they go back to their office because when the auditor gets in the financial an hour, two hours later, they get an email saying, you're apps done. So that's where the application comes in. The whole point is you have the auditor controlled audits by assigning username and passwords for receipts, who can get in and do receipts, who can do collection of the fees. The same principle also went with the fixed assets. So like here, the, this is DuBois County. Right here is all the different departments. They're the ones that had me design this to be able to have the departments log in and do their own thing. Howard County had me create asset control and DuBois said, why aren't you letting the departments? We are the auditor's office, we shouldn't be doing data entry. We don't know their stuff, we don't know what they call it. So that's when DuBois had me create this. And as you can see, it has how many times they've logged in, if they failed to log in, when they last logged in, the date and the time. Because one of the departments, as you can see, some of these don't have a date and time, never logged in. The point is that called up or emailed the auditor and says, well, I just don't understand this new system. And so they called me, can you go and explain, get on the phone and explain it to them? I said, what's their login? I went to the list and I had the auditor lady go in and I said, well, they've never logged in. And she says, thank you and don't bother about it, I'll take care of it. She called me back an hour later and says, I am so glad you had that because, she said, you're able to track what I'm doing? Yeah, you didn't even take the time to look at it, you know? When they did, they thought I was very easy to use. So the example is here, now that they've been using it for a year and a half, as you can see up here, right here, 4,970 current active items. Because here we have the ability to look at what's current, what's disposed of, items with issues, what does the auditor need to, well, like here, right there, it already shows 22 items the auditor needs to review because, again, the auditor's now auditing because these departments, Solid Waste Management District, added these new items. And it was above whatever threshold that they set. It's not an asset, but they wanted inventory because a lot of the counties weren't logging any of the guns. An officer walks around with about $3,000 worth of equipment. I learned that, again, working on these counties. And yet they weren't logging any of it. When they took a job at another town or another state or whatever, a lot of times they forgot or on purpose didn't turn their equipment back in and the sheriff's office never even thought about asking for it. All they do is go to the council again and say, hey, we need another 20 radios, we need another, the holsters and the, you know, the different things. You know, they looked at it, every year, every other year, they were buying those things again because they were letting things walk away. So the sheriff's office then started logging it to each officer or the vehicle that they drive, saying it's in that vehicle, anything above, I think, is a hundred dollars. Now, but it has serial numbers, like the guns and radios have serial numbers, at that point they can track the serial number. So if it's stolen, they can explain that and log it, that's the reason why. So in this case, if I said disposed of, 800, since we've been running, 857 items they disposed of. And it has a date and everything. If I hit add, you can see all the boxes, this is an accumulation of 20 different counties telling me what they want. And so they fill in the main box over the, on the right-hand side, so you bought 100 radios. 100 times they had to put in the, on a spreadsheet, they copied and pasted, they tried to give the vendor the amount and blah, blah, blah. Here I said, no, you put the general information in, everything about that invoice. Then over here, I allowed you to put up to 30 serial numbers. So over here, you put a quantity, then you put 100, and what the cost is per unit, and it gives you a total. But over here, you put in 30 serial number. It sits in a loop and adds them 30, it becomes 30 items. So then what comes back in, the 100 is now the 70, and then they can put in 30 more. So the bottom line, it tracks every one of them and then they can set a location or an officer or vehicle that they stuck the items into.
So I think we ought to take the time and see if any of us have questions.
Sorry.
For that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. You quoted with your quote, you say website application service till the end of the year, till the end of 21.
You could change that, by the way, to 2022.
That changes to 2022. So what are the actual, so go over with me, what the actual cost is what we would be paying you?
$4,000 a year.
$4,000 a year.
Last fee.
Last fee.
Per year.
Per year. Got you.
And I just.
And everything that you've shown is included in that or is just, is the whole?
And I have only scratched the surfaces of everything, so.
Because you list a bunch of this stuff on the floor.
Yes. And the bottom line is anything that's what we call ticker toy programs. My guy that works with me, I'm 56, he's 36, but we've both been programming for about 20, 22, oh, he's been 22 years, I've been 30 years. So to us, it's just like breeding, you know? If you, the council, the auditor, if you came up with another simple idea, we're going to add it in there because then you're going to tell other counties, yeah, we came up with that idea and it's still part of the $4,000. Only when I have a major change, a big thing like drains up north, ditches and drains that I increment the price, so.
As far as asset management, obviously we have that for our county roads, because we have to have that community crossings grants.
LTAP, yes.
But also we do not, I don't think, and Randy can correct me, we don't have a bridge, do we have a bridge inventory?
Not a real great one.
Not a real great one. Well, if we were to ever want to apply for some kind of grant, why we really would need that. So what would you need then for us to create as a bridge, for instance, a bridge inventory?
I know there's an LTAP out of Purdue, not for profit, that has a big fancy spreadsheet that has it for roads and I thought for bridges, I don't know, I mean, they have, you know, how wide is the road, how long is it, was it made of, you know? This, it was designed around what the state required for asset management.
Right, well, that is included, I think we have to have at least the road inventory, don't we, for even the state?
What most of the counties did was took it off the LTAP where there's, you know, what year was it made and then there's a depreciation factor. The bottom line is they just, there's, the main page of LTAP spreadsheet that they sent me, at least eight counties sent me, the main page that sums up the other tabs has, here's what paved roads are, here's gravel roads, here's chicken seal. The bottom line is what they did, I can check here real quick.
Are they, I mean, they're adding it into this fixed asset list then?
Yeah, so if I go to, in this case, the local, local group, let's see if it's under, not that infrastructure, all right, so clear that. This is DuBois, to see what they did. Road safety, now, see, that's not it. Again, I leave it to the county to try to, some counties actually listed every road. They gave it a line item and then the description was, you know, county road 500 north, 600 north. Each one had a description, those five miles wrong, 10 miles wrong, it cost this amount originally, and this is a year. Because you have to set up a life expectancy or depreciation. So this is what they're using, 3, 5, 7, all the way to 25. I've got counties that do 35, 50, 75, year depreciation. Again, it's all up to you what you decide and then you apply that to, you have a basic description, that's a chair, you know, even though you have different chair, but the one you're sitting in, it's still a chair. The basic description, those are chairs. The miscellaneous description that it's a high back, a decorative swivel, where that's just a secret herald. The point is you set that there's a chair, therefore what's the life expectancy for the chair? In this case, say five years. The desk, you know, tables, again, you do basic descriptions. They got almost 5,000 items in here, but they only got maybe 80 different basic descriptions. There's 80 different life expectancies then to assign. Therefore, then that gets depreciation assigned to it. So vehicles, car, you don't have to go and look at every vehicle and say, well, that was five years, that's 70. No, you have a vehicle become a car, it's five years, but vehicle become a dump truck is 15 years. So again, you can say roads, you can sum it up and say, here's all the roads and it's depreciation. Or you can set and put in every road and put the year in there so you depreciate each one or each bridge. You can say what, if you gave a bridge a number or a name, you can put it in as an item. And then set, you know, the bridges are this many years, but this was done in 1910, this was 1930, 1950, so each one has their own depreciation. You can put pictures in there, you can add notes, you can put invoices, you can attach PDFs, you can have documentations for it. Beyond that, I wouldn't know what else you need. It's not that we can't add it, we've been adding like crazy based on what other counties. But so far, all the counties relied on that LTAP spreadsheet that was very involved, where mine was more of the basic bottom line. So again, it's flexible to what you want to do.
Sure.
And how far you want to go with it.
Are there any other questions? Because we're going to need to move on, so.
I agree.
How is the asset tracking happening now?
It's not very good. We've got that Greg Akeret book that we've had forever and I don't have a very good tracking record and state board council's in auditing and when we had a meeting, they were exactly everything he was talking about.
Okay, okay. But how is it happening now? It's in a book?
Yeah.
And it hasn't been kept up?
Which I told her, more than likely.
It hasn't been kept up?
Correct.
So whether or not it's a good system or not, it hasn't been utilized?
Correct.
And what I told her, even though hers is in a book, more than likely your department's have it in spreadsheets.
More than likely.
So we, as part of the package, we convert those and put them in there for you. We try to stay.
So if there's a spreadsheet, an existing spreadsheet at a department or any of those departments, you can take that spreadsheet and import it into your system and they don't have to sit there and type in everything on their spreadsheet in there.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Nope. Other than the $4,000 you can pay for the.
Right, right. But you can import spreadsheet information into your system so that we don't have to put people sitting there typing in thousands of entries of assets for the departments that have them.
That's what I said. When she showed me the book, I said, no, no, that's not our problem. But I said, more than likely departments have them on spreadsheets. But then they got to go back and review it because they just, you know, probably didn't upkeep it as well.
We have three department heads in here right now that have a lot of assets. Any of you have a spreadsheet? You have two heads, none at this point. Randy, yours, probably not.
Jamie's working on it.
That's fine. But Justin, you do, you have a spreadsheet of assets and Julie, you do a spreadsheet of assets that could be dumped right into.
It's not like we just dump it in, we try to clean it up standardize.
I get it.
But it takes anywhere from a week to a month to clean things up and then we go with auditor, they would go with them, they would make a login, they would then review it. We'd make emails back and say, well, we have no idea what this item is. The verbiage doesn't make any sense to us, we can't even find it on Google. But bottom line, yes, it can be done.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I appreciate you coming. I'd already told the auditor, she probably told you, we'll look at this at budget time for '22. Our budget will be coming up in August or September, so we'll look at it then. So there's no decision today.
Didn't expect this, again, I deal with 70 and 80 counties.
That's kind of where we're at on that. We appreciate you coming and we will consider, and if we have any questions, we'll contact you.
Right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Meese.
Okay, for the rest of the council, we had a road commission meeting the other day, if you remember that, we established a road commission about, oh, a year and a half ago or so. And the concern that we had to call us to a meeting was, I think Randy's department is down seven to nine people right now. Is that what they? And the biggest cause of that, of course, is pay. And the biggest cause of that, of course, is pay, and so we collected, Randy collected, and I collected information from all the surrounding counties, including Vigo and Putnam County, but we didn't include those in our numbers, because we're not Vigo County, and we're not Putnam County with the assets and the income, the tax base that they have, but we did compare with us, Vermillion, Fountain, and Clay. And so running all the numbers of the pay positions that we have on the highway department, we are, we were at the bottom in every category, and we, ours was designed a little bit differently. I ran the average, for example, on truck drivers, and truck drivers' average over those other three counties was eighteen dollars and six cents an hour, and we were, start off in the fifteen dollar range, you get up to the sixteen dollar range eventually, but we were considerably below everybody else. And so a little question as to why we have difficult time keeping people or getting people. Randy's toughest time right now is even getting applications for the CDL jobs to come in. State Highway has signed it by my house there, by the State Highway Barn, and they're accepting online applications, it says right there, they pay twenty dollars an hour, start off with. So we had to make an adjustment if we intend to have a highway department, we need truck drivers, obviously, and we have now, really, for the first time, really the first time, began hiring non-CDL people to do some work, just because we can't get CDL people. In the past, we just required, if you're going for the highway department, you need to have a CDL, I said, you might need to get a truck and drive today, but we can't fill all those spots, so we changed. So the commission talked, of course, no decisions are made in such a meeting as that, but we did go over all the numbers, we threw out ideas, we kind of had to come to a consensus, and then following that creation, that consensus of those members on that commission, then we did have a special meeting, as advertised, of the commissioners, because we wanted to bring something to you, to your meeting today. And so the consensus was displayed and expressed in a vote by the commissioners at the special meeting, and Roy has all the numbers, but what we, what we suggested was getting right to the middle, not, not the highest paid, not the bottom paid, but the least get the average with the, with the rest of the counties around us. So those numbers would be, we would have two categories of each position, we have positions of, and some counties don't even do that, but we have positions of truck drivers, carpenters, bridge people, mechanics, all these things. So the way we did it, we broke it up into two categories, basically, if you have a CDL, you get one rate, if you don't have a CDL, you get a second rate. So the numbers, as best in my mind, and Roy, correct me if I'm wrong, you're on any of these, we start off with the foreman position, we go to nineteen dollars an hour, currently that's about seventeen dollars an hour, but we suggested foreman nineteen dollars an hour, all CDL positions at the highway department to eighteen dollars an hour, which is six cents below the average, but it's right at the average, non-CDL at the highway department would be seventeen dollars, and.
Part-time, see.
Part-time, twelve.
Fifteen.
Fifteen now, yeah, it was down, so fifty, part-time be fifteen. So that, that is our recommendation, that voted on by the commissioners, to bring to you that we alter our pay scale, and what we did not include in the motion, of course, because it's not our decision to make, when you do this, and if you do this, we're just recommending this to you guys to make that decision. But we already have nine positions that we can't fill at the highway department, we're gonna need truck drivers this, this winter, we need truck drivers now.
Now.
We just can't get the work done that needs to be done, because they don't have the capacity to do that. Now, we know we gotta find money someplace, but we can't, like we talked about, you know, insurance is too high, we know that, we work on that every year, Dr. Just had a conversation with a gentleman today of another way of going with insurance, but we gotta be careful that we don't give it in one hand and take it back with the other hand, so we gotta make sure that this is gonna be a pay raise, that it's a real pay raise. So our recommendation to you, and to act on it as you can, and if you can, as soon as you can, to go with that scale that Roy, Roy has a copy of. So once again, that would be nineteen dollars for the foreman, eighteen dollars for all positions that have CDL, seventeen dollars at all positions that don't have a CDL, and fifteen dollars at the part-time help.
You might point out, it's becoming more and more difficult to even obtain a CDL, it is not something you just show up at the license branch and you just, they hand that over to you.
I can give you an example, we just lost one driver, and of course, we can't even compete with that, but he went, I think maybe to Cisco, but to a trucking company in Indianapolis, he made him twenty-eight bucks an hour, he went from sixteen bucks an hour to twenty-eight bucks an hour, just because CDL's are in demand. And if we're gonna have truck drivers, we're gonna have to, gonna have to pay him something reasonable.
And I think if we don't act now, you aren't gonna have anybody to fly snow this winter, and Randy can't get anything then if he doesn't have the help, and none of us, at least in my mind, this is probably not the, the old grand solution to everything. We're hoping it helps him, and hope that it will at least retain the ones that we still have, and hopefully, maybe attracts some people that are willing to work for us.
And this certainly isn't saying that the highway department is more important than any other department, it's just that this highway department is so drastically below of the averages of all the other counties, that that adjustment needs to be made. And if we find out that the other departments are in the same position, or dramatically lower than all the surrounding counties, then we'll have to address that at some point too, but this is causing a real problem for us, and it's a real number on a piece of paper, and you can easily see what the difference is.
People want their road fixed, and if we have no help to the.
Yes, yes.
Do we pay for the CDL?
We have that option, we talked about that before, we would, but there are other programs around that do that as well, workforce, for example, workforce in Terre Haute, out of so many offices, on that board as well, there are several programs out there that will absolutely pay for the CDL license, but we already have said we would, we would pay for that training.
We do have an order, it's a place to pay.
Yes, we do, yep. So we offer all that, we just can't get people to do it. So hopefully, we got someone hired in as a non-CDL, hopefully, that they would move up by the other buck an hour by getting that CDL and moving on up, and we would pay for that, if you come on a board, and we'll pay for that CDL.
So anybody that wants it, we'll pay for a CDL?
Yes.
Because I, I had to do that many years ago, to get bus drivers, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Same, same deal, right?
Typically, most companies now are doing that, with some promise that you're gonna stay working at that position for, you know, three years or something, and if you don't, then you pay back that fee, but, but that's, it's, it's what's needed to be done, if you want people to do that.
What we've been doing for advertising, as far as the positions?
Local papers.
Just the local papers? I've seen it.
Which local papers, Clantonian, Sentinel, any other papers?
I've always shared it on Facebook, so there's, that's social media.
You just.
Well, well, it gets out, yeah, yeah, mine, personal page, yeah, yeah. We don't have a highway department.
We talked about the other day, even I suggested even maybe the Vanuana Graphic in Greencastle, now Randy said that the Tripstar was pretty expensive, but it is, but maybe the Vanuana Graphic, and.
Your current, your current, Crawfordsville, I do think we need to.
Does the highway department have a Facebook page themselves? So.
It might help.
Yes, this, the generation that's there right now, everybody gets their information from Facebook.
We're all.
As much as I hate it, it's the way to go, if we're not putting that information out there on Facebook, as much as I dislike the Park County Chatter page, there's an abundance of people there that look at that page an awful lot, and if you're putting that information out there, I love the Sentinel, I get most of my, you know, updates from them, however, we gotta be doing more.
Typically, it's always been sufficient word of mouth, even once a job came up, if somebody was there to grab it now, not the way it is anymore.
People aren't talking face to face like they used to.
Well, it's, it's the CDL's the problem.
It is the problem, yeah.
I mean, you can, you can advertise it all over.
And the feds?
It's the CDL.
It's the feds, not the state, it's the feds that change the rules, they're changing, now, you're gonna have to have a CDL, it used to be, you didn't have a CDL, put a bounty pickup truck and pull the trailer behind it, whatever load, now, you're gonna have to have a CDL to drive that pickup truck and pull that load above a certain way.
How long have we been paying for CDLs?
Couple of years.
Yeah, maybe two.
Yeah, couple of years, probably. Have we ever had Mike take advantage of it?
Yeah, I haven't.
Good, yeah. Those are numbers we don't see, we just know it's out there.
Right.
Highway department uses it.
Okay, well, I think we know what the issues are, you have in front of you, a limit to the salary ordinance that Roy's creating, you wanna?
Well, there's two, there's, we have to keep, we have to keep categories like they are for the time being, because these positions are paid out of different funds, so. We had this long conversation about whether or not we needed that or not, and that's why it's staying that way, I mean, the first thing on this ordinance is an amendment for the part-time nurse, and catch up what we've done so far this year with hours and rates for hours, so. At this point, each, the first line on this is catching that up to current. Then the rest of this is all the converting of the current ordinance to the updates that is discussed by Commissioner Mies, so we had three tiers for most of these jobs, the bridge carpenter, and I'm only on the look at one of these really, the bridge carpenter, bridge carpenter two, bridge carpenter three would be in the rates that they were paid, would convert to bridge carpenter non-CDL, and bridge carpenter CDL, seventeen, eighteen dollars, and that's, that particular group of individuals is in the fuel bridge fund, then there's a group of individuals, and MBH restricted, which are the operators, and then the balance is in the MBH fund, so the truck drivers, foreman, laborers, seasonal operators, mechanics, parts man, fuel man. All right, so with the intent, with this, this very long and windy and everything, is to convert these three tiers into two, and adjust the hourly rates to correspond as was presented by the commissioners or, and you've just heard about, so. That's the salary ordinance amendment that would make this official from the position of the county council. At this point, it's sustainable for the balance of twenty-one, I think. There will likely be some, some transfers and adjustments that will need to be made later in the year. Obviously, when you're down seven to nine individuals, you have several that aren't getting paid, so your usage in some of these lines is lower than what would be anticipated at this time per year for what we adopted for a budget, okay? But we may have some, some significant adjustments to make later in the year for positions that have been filled the whole time. I am going to say this again, I know that those that were in the road commission hearing this, that this is not sustainable if we cannot get the insurance cost under control. And I have beat that drum, I, Commissioner Mies started hearing me say that, I know he is, and, and others are too, but I agree that we aren't, that we have to get these salaries to the average, I think that's a place to start, but it is not sustainable if we cannot get some of that under control. Our insurance costs are killing us, it's the largest line item in the budget, it's the largest spend, we have to get that under control. I know they're gonna work on it, but I'm just cautioning that Randy has submitted his, his revised budget, it grew significantly, calculating on these new salaries for twenty-two. All right, it grew significantly. But we also gotta have people to get to work on it. If we don't, it doesn't matter about the rest of it. So with that being said, that's the ordinance amendment you have in front of you, are there any questions about that? Hopefully, yeah, and hopefully, it's clear enough that you can understand it, it's, it's a very difficult thing to try to put on paper, what we talked about, and converting, and all these things that we had to do to make this work.
I think what you're saying, we can do this for now, but if some other things don't change, we're gonna have to undo it.
Well, something we'll have to give at some point there, right? I mean, you take money away from, from, from projects or, or roadwork to pay the salaries or something, if we don't get things under control in other parts, so something that has to make up for some of it.
Don't have the end of the year coming, but at this point, but we don't really see those numbers, because we pay the bills as they go for insurance, but at this point, we are a little better than a quarter million dollars below budget on insurance costs this year, so we'll see how that goes, the expected costs, so.
So.
Okay, any questions on that? I mean, I think we do need to do this, it's all about, you're paying for a CDL, we're paying for training and education here, so.
And that's the biggest, I keep jumping in here, but, you know, this department, that has ambulance, that has sheriff, I mean, they all require specialized skills, specialized license, specialized training, they all require that, as, if you're gonna give people specialized skills and licenses, you're gonna have to.
You're gonna have to travel.
You're gonna have to track them.
Okay.
The motion, all.
Yeah, to amend the salary ordinance.
The salary ordinance, that'll be resolution twenty-twenty-one, that's.
Now, that's, this doesn't get a number, it's just an amendment to the ordinance.
So now, we need an effective date, what is the?
Well, what I would propose is that the effective date begins, it reverts back to the beginning of the current pay period that is being worked. So I don't know where we are in the pay schedule at this particular point in time, but they are working today, and whatever, whenever this pay period started, is where I believe it should start.
I think you all agree, otherwise it's gonna be.
All on one pay schedule, starts on that day, that's the day that it began.
Last Sunday.
When would it be, Randy?
Last Sunday.
Last Sunday was when the pay.
So the sixth, the sixth is the beginning of the pay schedule, is that right?
Is that the way you all see it?
The payroll is almost completed now.
Well, that's for, that's for time work.
And we're talking about the pay that's happening today.
Not the check, we're talking about the work period.
The work period, in case, that means the payroll that they'll turn in, in a week for them.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It becomes effective, if, if the pay period started on the sixth, it becomes effective at the beginning of the sixth.
So, yeah, the paycheck that they're working towards right now, it will be effective on.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah.
Next paycheck that he'll be the old one.
It'll be the last old one, the next one will be the first new one.
So you wanna make that as part of your motion, that it's effective?
Effective June sixth.
Okay, motion been made, second amendment, salary ordinance, all fair.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
There are no, okay, one no, Mr. Rice. Okay, there you are, I hope that helps you, Randy.
No, it's okay, I appreciate it.
Okay. Jim, did you have anything else in the?
No, I'll ask you, I got me to ten fifteen, and I gotta go.
Sorry, we kept you, so all that, guy got kind of wizzy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand people talking that much.
I know you would never do that.
I know, I understand that a lot. Nothing you need from me?
I don't think so, I don't know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sheriff?
Seventy-one in jail, we're doing another gun auction this, this Saturday, down at the, at least part of, part of the mutualies apartment, come down at ten AM. It should get rid of the rest of our stockpile of guns and one vehicle we have to sell for September. We got notice, I think last week, our vehicle grant from the USDA, it got approved, it's a two thousand dollar amount, so, so that's good. Year to date, we built seventy-two thousand through seventy-eight for DLC in out of County Holding, and build nineteen fifty for May.
Any questions for the sheriff? No? Yes, sir?
No, I just asked Justin a question.
Oh, okay.
But he's talking to you.
Oh, well, he's already done.
Who was so real, did any party?
Who wasn't in there?
Well, like a company, then sold.
Yeah, you had a deputy did that, wasn't you?
Oh, Brad, Brad did the upgrade, like a.
Only reason I ask, I got a new truck, I need to transfer my radio, would you be the one to do that?
Yeah, so.
Okay, we're done with that, all right. Randy?
I just really.
You just hear for that, okay.
And if you had any questions on our additional.
I get transfers this time, additional will shuffle next month.
Right.
Oh, okay.
The ones, the Bridge one sixty-four transfers on here today.
Yeah.
I think we're fine.
Okay.
But stay, you know, feel free to stay.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you, I hope that, we hope it helps you, try to get some, try to get some people hired, try to advertise, maybe some other places, so that we can try to pull some in.
We will.
All right.
Oh, I did forget to say, the Community Crossing Grant opens up eight o'clock, I think it is, on Ju-, July the fifth, and closes July thirtieth.
You guys and Cindy have already pretty well got that under control.
But didn't you and the commissioners go out and look at some of the roads or something? They told me that you were all gonna be out looking.
Got the list.
Got the list.
I'm gonna make, uh, July from Wall Base Valley out like Monday, I hope, and drive and get it as fast as I can.
Okay.
Be closer.
All right, good deal. Good deal, thank you. Ms. Sizer?
Yes, um, we have our tax court hearing has been set with our petitioner, it is June the 17th, it is oral arguments. I will not be a part of that, it'll just be my attorney, that's their mode of operandi. So I will know something after that on what's going on with the tax court case. Currently, we have 34 appeals and it closes June 15th on appeals. And we're doing reassessment, we got Sugar Creek done already and we are in, it's either Florida Town, or Florida Township or Rosedale Town, I can't remember which one we went to the next, but we're down in that area.
Okay, good deal. Julie?
I'm not gonna read my whole report, as you guys can see, actually, our, our revenue has come up, we're up from where we were last year, we're actually up from where we were, um, two years ago, which was our highest year ever. I kept telling everybody that I expected those to come up because our run volume was so high, but we've had a really long delay because of insurance companies, so we're finally starting to see that. We still have a lot of outstanding that they're working on. For some reason, we found out a lot of our Anthem and Blue Cross Blue Shield were going to Indiana Unblamed, I've never had that happen before, so I had to file for that, I still don't know why, I called both of them, um, our address obviously hasn't changed, so they couldn't answer that. That's just where they send checks to, I'm not sure why. So I did file to get those back, um, kind of a pain, but we get checks from them every day, I don't know. So we are 25,000 ahead of our collections last year, we're still about 12,000 ahead of where we were the year before, which was our biggest year ever, so I, I intend to see that grow, I expect to see that grow, as we go throughout the year and start collecting on some of the accounts from last year. The next thing after my normal report is the vaccine clinic, we did move that to the A.D.L. service, so it's there for the remainder of time when we have it. Tanya's been using the classroom, we've kind of switched it over and Tanya's mainly running that now. Our appointment numbers have gone down so a little bit, she's able to maintain, I, I just run down and help her when she has several people that come in at the same time, so it's going really well, I'm still getting, well, normally about 30 to 35 appointments a week, but this week, just on Friday, we've got about 37, I think. So Friday's kind of a big day. Uh, we do have all three vaccines now, the state kind of surprised us with that. They gave Johnson and Johnson, it was just supposed to be for the jail, and then they sent us Pfizer for the kids, and we've been getting the Derna the whole time, and they were like, here, use them all at the same time. So now we have all three vaccines, um, it's been pretty, pretty out in public, people know, so some people are still randomly walking in wanting a vaccine, some people are rescheduling, but it's staying fairly consistent still, which I wasn't really expecting. Um, we talked to the commissioners, and I wanted to talk to you guys, so the state, and I, I think I've talked to all of, or talked to at least Roy and John individually, the state has the two grants, one for continuing the vaccine clinic and one for continuing the testing site through June of next year. And we had said, you know, when you, when you pay rent and you pay all of the stuff that we've had to pay to continue that stuff over this past year, it's not really worth it for our county because our numbers are so low that our costs would way outweigh what they would send to us. Tanya and I kind of walked around the building, I, I got a random parabron idea, we talked to Jim and the commissioners, um, we actually have a spot on the west side of our building that we can create a drive-through. And that would allow us to not pay rent, not pay utilities, not, not have any upfront cost, um, and still be able to offer those services, plus Tanya's still working on, um, a list of revenues that she can bring in, which is huge. So we can actually put a drive-through in next to our building, Tanya, if there's a spot for Tanya, where she would be able to have a little makeshift office and, and run that whole thing during her normal hours that she has and, and we're out no money. The commissioners approved that, they were okay with that. The county highway showed up, I was not expecting them to be there, and cut the two trees down that were dying anyway, so they've already started making a spot, um, and at least they got rid of the trees that were dying. So, um, it, it's up to you guys to approve, I think, um, the finances of how those two grants would be spent, but we are, we know for sure allowed to use them on salaries, which would help with Tanya. So that's really all I have, I think, um, we've already talked about the, the vacation time issue with my employees, so that's kind of where we're at.
Do we really, do we need testing, do you think? I mean, how many would we be testing?
So doing a little more than I thought we would. Um, and I don't, some hospitals have gone away, well, in our area, Union Hospital Health Group has gone away from testing before procedures, but all of the big surgery centers in Indy, the ortho centers and some of the big centers had not, and so people still have to have a place to go if they're gonna have a procedure. Another thing we found out is a lot of people are coming in, because even if you've been vaccinated, if you travel, some of the places that they're going to are requiring a test. Well, the cruise ships are set to open back up in July, and even if you've been vaccinated, they're requiring a test before you go. Um, a lot of, the airplanes themselves aren't, but the destination spots are, so if you're going to like a couples resort or some kind of, of a resort vacation, if you're going to an industrial plant because you're a construction worker, if you're working inside of a nursing home, any of those, they're requiring tests still. And they said they expect this to last for at least a year. So if we can.
So it is more than what we really originally, even when you and I talked, Dwight, it's a little more.
But it's, it's manageable being ran by the nurse?
Yeah.
Instead of paying up, pulling people to sit down here.
So she would actually be able to manage both the vaccines and the testing at the same time in the same building that's already owned by the county, like, good sense.
Well, that morphs into what, I'm gonna interrupt here, it morphs into what I asked Tanya to come in for today, because it's June, it's time for us to make another decision on, on what we do with the nurse. Uh, we've been paying extra hours and extra dollars per hour since the pandemic started, as you recall, started last year. Um, but there's a lot of us who believe that pandemic part of this is wrapping, that, that we should be wrapping that up. But, that being said, I, I'm of the position that we put it on, on that group, the, the health department, the health board, the nurse, Julie certainly has been involved with all this very, very deeply, to provide a plan, a roadmap, at how to keep that position at 30 hours, or it is right now, 29, whatever, I don't know what it is, 29, right? 29 hours, when we have for several years funded it at 15, right? So, uh, we need to make that decision at some point of what we do for the next three months, as we've been doing quarterly. But I think with the support of the council, if there is support for this, that we put back on, on them to come up with the roadmap, to set out a plan at how to keep that working and make that fund, uh, at least fiscally neutral. Uh, and from what I've heard from both of you, that there are a lot of opportunities here, a lot of revenue streams that we haven't taken advantage of as a county health department, that, and a lot of, uh, ability to do a better service that we are going to get mostly paid for. So, speaking for myself at this point, and everybody chiming in, um, I think the message that I want delivered here is, is after today, go back and put that roadmap together, and how in September, when this time, or in August, when we're having our budget hearings, that you have a presentation on how we can, how that can be done. Something on that? Does anybody have any issue, concerns at the time?
I'm not the guy to make that plan, I can tell you that right now, but these people do know how to do that.
Yeah, just so we maintain the service to the county.
Right.
And if it's through vaccine and testing, if it's through childhood immunizations, if it's through, whatever it is, I don't care, but if we're gonna provide a service and the state's gonna pay us to do it, and our nurse is more than capable of doing it, then why are we not providing that service? And she's getting compensated to do that. I'm, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Well, that's one of the things, I mean, in the past, while we've not been doing really any childhood vaccinations or anything, out of the health department, we either contracted out the family health and health center, which I think no need to do if we have you, quite honestly, and that's, and I speak for myself and myself only.
I agree.
But I don't know why we need to contract out some of this stuff when we are very capable of doing it ourselves.
I can tell you our ambulance service right now is doing the childhood vaccines.
Okay.
It's not a job that most ambulance services.
No, it's not.
It's not really your job, but we appreciate what you do.
We didn't have anybody else, so Tanya's been really integral in helping me with that, and we're, we have all the vaccine right now, we're getting ready to start putting our campaign together for summer childhood vaccines, and she has agreed to help with all of that and help make sure that everything goes smooth and the vaccines get done, so.
I say we just turn the two of you loose and figure it out, that's what I.
That's exactly why I said, what I was saying is, if we bring her in and we turn you loose, figure it out.
That's what I say.
Figure it out, keep yourself employed.
There's probably a suspect in there. And present, be ready to present to us in, in August at our budget hearings on your plan, how you're gonna do it.
So we need to go ahead and extend it another.
I would make the motion that we extend, uh, the nurses' hours and pay per hour from, uh, from July through September for the next, for the third quarter, um, which is 29 hours, that's an additional 14 over what has been budgeted for, and it's $10 an hour that we, uh, cut down in the first few quarters this year.
Well, we need to get together about those two grants, because they'll come in, um, July, so the testing and the vaccine can be used 100% of our salary, so they need to work for running those sites.
No, we can obviously pull it out of there instead of local health trust, where we've been taking this all the time, so when you guys get that in firm detail, then we'll sit down and, and, uh, figure out how to make it work. But at this point, we do need to move it forward because at the, uh, end of this month, you'd be back to the peanut.
You need a second. Please second it.
Motion been made, seconded, all fair.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good deal. Did you have anything else you wanted to say, or anything about anything else, or just here for this, I guess?
I was, I was here for this, but there's a lot of, I've already started working on the possible, uh, opportunities, because I know there's even things that the health department normally wouldn't offer, like CPR classes and stuff like that, I'm working on getting certified to do, because I know I've won at EMS station, and that'd be huge, um, this needed all over for everything. But, yeah, there's a lot, um, that I could be generating and willing to do.
That's why we put it back on you to put the plan together.
I would.
Because I don't know what those, we don't know what our plans are, I don't know if there's, you know, if you could write that plan, so.
Well, I seen on TV last night that we were one or two counties that had gone up in our situation in the last two weeks.
As far as the cases?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right now, whenever I ran the numbers a couple days ago, we only had three cases in our county for the, for this month. Now, I'm watching, because after this month, and July is whenever we started to trend upwards, and we started to see, that's when it started to get out of control last year, um, July, August, September, and then October, it was just beyond.
Yeah. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Julie, anything else?
That's it for me.
We did propose to the commissioners about the, uh, what last line on here, paying out vacation time, brought up in road meetings.
We said they'd think about it first.
I got a question. I'm, I'm happy to approve that.
Well, they didn't do that, I don't think.
They didn't, and they opened made it was asked out there.
They talked like, so they just need to probably be reminded to do it in their open meeting, because the meeting there, we actually already adjourned, what was crazy.
And that actually, point, this makes it clear, right, we need to make sure, obviously, you need to make sure they get this clear, brought up to them is those positions that require coverage, so.
Yeah.
End up morphing into, to hits, so.
It's basically.
Dispatchers, deputies.
Public safety.
Mostly public safety, right, for, somebody's gotta be there. You don't take a day off and nobody covers it, somebody's gotta fill in.
When I talked to Justin, they proposed it just to make sure that it would be beneficial for him and not, not be bad for his department in some way, because sometimes what, what's good for my department isn't always good for his, and I knew it was gonna affect across the board like that, so I talked to him before I said anything, just to make sure.
But it's not exclusive to the ambulance service.
It's basically, yeah, the way the commissioners, we talked to them, would be for public safety, so, Sheriff.
Okay.
I am down right now to employees, so I, I lost a full-time medic, um, I've got one medic that's out for 16 weeks because he had to have surgery. I've talked to you guys the whole time and let you know, I'm probably gonna have to rearrange funds because I'm filling in part timers, I'm getting no applications. It's a very skilled, there's a nationwide shortage of medics, so it's, I don't have a lot of hope that I'm gonna hire somebody by the end of the year, but I do have four people in school, one of them graduates in December with his medic, the other three will be next May, so the future is there, but the right now is not there, so we're, we're just making it work how we can make it work.
And there are like, like an end date or something, short, huge numbers of medics and stuff, right?
In the, well, statewide, they said there's almost 12,000 medics that were short to fill the shifts that they need. That's just Indiana, but it's a nationwide shortage, so there's not much hope for me. I mean, they're offering like brand-new vehicles for people that finish an EMT class, they're offering, um, Monroe County is offering a $7,500 sign-on bonus, like, they have an experience level, so it's $23 to $28 an hour for new medics there, and they've had zero applications in the three weeks that that's been open. If they can't get applicants with that big of a sign-on bonus and that much pay.
Right.
EMS is a, is kind of a skilled field, but rural EMS is even more than city-based EMS because our transports are so long and the amount of treatment that we do are so much more in-depth. So if they can't find city-based EMS, we have no hope right now. We'll just make it work how we can. That's why, I'm almost done with our, uh, training center, so we're just gonna try to grow our own.
Okay, good idea.
Okay, thanks for a good job, Julie.
Yes. Yeah. There's something on your audit report?
Uh, yes, I'd like to just let you know that I have the ARP grant, I've applied for that, as, uh, county auditors has passed to the starting of that ARP grant, and the settlement is being processed right now, we have been pre-approved, the checks are being cut today, going out, and then State Board Council's in right now to start doing their audits.
There's no public, is Chris down there?
Chris, he's been lingering and going back.
Oh, okay, well, you can tell we're ready, whatever.
Does he got time to lay here?
Well, you can ask him, yeah.
Just a question.
Yes, he has something, he'll be right here.
He's a busy guy.
I, I don't have anything to tell you all.
Uh, well, you're on my, you're on my sheet, so.
Yeah, I saw that. All I had was just, was appropriation, but I think that's all worked out.
Okay.
Good.
Well, maybe I didn't need you after all, then.
Get the money, Chris.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks.
I get her for it, Chris.
Good job. Approval of the minutes in the prior meeting.
The second group.
Motion been made, seconded, approval of the minutes, all fair. Additional appropriations? Uh, parking rec, 1795 for health insurance, that's for the 18% increase that the, uh, commissioners put, or, uh, adopted last year for insurance, and we, and built that up enough in parking rec for the insurance, uh, line there, so we're catching that one up. Uh, 911 is in relation to one of these grants, um, it's the match amount that we talked about last month in here for the, uh, GIS project, uh, the match for that, the local match, is $11,890, so that would be appropriated out of statewide 911.
I don't know that I can move, but I'll move to the, to additional appropriations salary.
I apologize.
You're good. So do we have the tip?
No.
I haven't put it in yet. What I say, it's not been. Apparently the advertising's not right.
Everything but the total line is correct.
So you think that's good enough? See, if you look at your additional appropriation, that is the problem with this.
Total central part. One they want to prove. So let's, let's put off the, let's put off the parking rec.
Better table it, because it's not advertised right, we're not allowed.
Yeah, and that one will have to.
You see what's wrong with that, or?
Yes.
So that'll have to be tabled, we can't, that can't be figured, but you can do the, um, the 911.
Yeah, we can do the 911. So I will, I will amend my motion to approve the statewide 911 additional and to, uh, let's go, let's just deny the park one for now and we'll redo it appropriately. That's your motion?
That's mine. And I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor? All right. Okay. Well, I looked at that, I thought that was a good one, right? All right, transfers?
Uh, I don't, I don't really know the story with this, but.
The King Bridge, um, they want to transfer 59,000 from the inspections to Bridge 164 to, to have enough money to do the repairs.
I don't know which bridge that is.
Yeah, Randy moved up one, um, it may be this one, he talked to me about it, I slipped it.
Is it the one I've been complaining about?
No, that was already that one, that was already on there. Um, this is, uh, I believe on Nine Stoll Road.
Yeah, everything goes up there.
Absolutely.
We know where that's buried.
So I think that's what... Yeah, they're not going to need all the money in the bridge inspection lines. They're working on... We're going to do a bridge project, so that's what this is.
Okay. So we got that one.
Motion to approve the transfer.
All fair.
Aye.
No appropriations, no jury pay, no reduction in fence, redevelopment?
Redevelopment met, and we took care of our annual report stuff to do, and there are some tip reports and so on, and that'll be dealt with. That was the end of the meeting.
Fighting, Tony?
New petition. The cheese factory was going up on 350, then moved to the west. I think we got that approved, but I did not intend to mean...
Okay. Court house security did not mean. Solid waste. That's happening with solid waste.
You know, the meeting last month, I was out of town for it, so I wasn't able to attend it. The last first meeting was in January, and I didn't know about it until after it had happened. The meeting in March was canceled because of spring break.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Yeah, that little waste.
We saw it.
Okay, so everybody's... Got the resolution that...
Yeah, we've got a resolution to adopt to do a inter-fund transfer from statewide 911 to the GIS data conversion grant fund. So this is the amount of the grant, $17,835. That's what's to be expected. And the grant paperwork that you also have from Mr. O'Brien. So we will borrow the money out of statewide 911 to seed the grant fund, so all the money will be there to pay the invoice, and then they will reapply. Then they will apply for reimbursement of the amount of $17,835, at which point that would then be repaid.
And Chris doesn't think we'll receive the funding.
He doesn't believe that... Yeah, a lot of times we haven't been doing these if we're going to get the money back in the same fiscal year, but at this point, he's not certain that he'll get the money back before the end of the year. So you cannot leave the fund in the red at the end of the year. So we're going to see that if he gets it back in time, the loan gets repaid. It's a wasted effort, but if not, we don't have to try to get it done later on.
We're covered.
If he hasn't done it, it'll have to be a...
Most of them, I believe, in 2021-06, we passed.
Second.
Motion been made. Segment all fair.
Aye.
Aye.
There's the grants, I guess. Look.
What about the minutes? Do we have the college center and Zach Haven day?
John, you have two places assigned.
In your packet, you do have the agenda for the State Ball Conference of the Indiana County Council's Association. It's in Plainfield this year. The pass has been in Joeyville. If you are interested, you can let the auditor know, and she will make your reservation. Sometimes some of us have gone in the past, and some have lies to Park County and some will not. It's not a bad thing. Sometimes we've cut out a little early if there wasn't anything particularly interest us after lunch, or... So it's up to any of you. Let the auditor know if you would like to get or like to be signed up on a Saturday. Anything else?
With two departments, three departments left to submit their budget requests for one, two, everybody else is in. One of those that asked for an extension, do you have an update on where the three community ones?
I don't, but I can find out.
Please do. I've already been in conversation with the coroner, who's the third, the second one, and then public defender's the third, which asked for an extension because they're working on some things with neighboring counties and weren't meeting again until this week. Everybody else is in.
Okay, anything else?
Well, it's a little early. We've got budgets coming up. Like we discussed previously, as far as the highway department moving the rates, I think we're going to find ourselves in a position moving forward. And I know that there's only so much we can do about it, but we quote training, experience, education for those jobs. Other departments are going to do the same. And I know that Justin's probably going to be looking at this moving forward. Our deputies are making $18 an hour, give or take a few cents to get shot at potentially. Something we're going to have to consider moving forward.
But we already have an ordinance established where you can receive additional funds for tactical training, I think, firearms instructor. What are all those now, Justin? Haven't even been to the academy. K-9 academy. So we have made an effort already to address some of those training type things, and those are stipends certainly above their normal pay. So that's one area that we have worked on. But it's all something that can be looked at. But as Roy said, if we don't get this health insurance, you know, if they allow any health insurance to continue to go up, there'll be no money for any risks. So until they get that under control, $34,000 for a family plan is not sustainable in this county, when the insurance trust for the school is a little over 20.
No, it's a little over 17.
Oh, I'm sorry, a little over 17. Plutnam County, where only 10,000.
About 23, 24,000, 10,000 less, so.
So you're talking a massive problem here. That's why you're beating that dead horse, is that we have to do something about it.
Can I ask who the school has?
It's their big, it's the school trust. I don't know if it's Anthem or who has, but...
It's part of that many years ago, and we... I thought the county was going to go in too at that time, but...
That's when Anthem made all the cuts and promises.
Oh, yeah. Anthem was walking in, offering in and out, it's a good time, and every dime I was giving for all the kids, like normally, was going to go to pay them.
Yeah.
It was ridiculous.
The counties were going in the trust, or Mason, and they went around, I think you went with them.
Yeah.
And then Anthem came in, Lord, everybody's ready to keep going in the trust.
Now they're...
They turned right around and smacked them back the next year.
Yeah, we went to Clinton, and they laughed at us.
Because Anthem had lied to them.
I don't know. It's made the test of time so far. So the trust is, goes back to my last year, so you're talking how many years?
No, it's been around a while, right? You know, we listened to this guy talk about circuit breakers and all that business, right? Our circuit breaker cap's about 25,000, county government, so it's not... But in Vermillion, it's better part of a million dollars. I mean, there's a huge difference between the two counties in that because of our property tax rates. But you've said this a bunch of times. Last year, our growth quotient was about 4.2, something like that. Few of you have been on this council for a good long time. You ever seen a number like that?
Nope.
What was the revenue increase from that? Does anybody remember? About $180,000, right? $180,000. What does 5% on our current insurance do for next year? It's $180,000. All your revenue growth's going there. That's it.
So tell you, you figured that out.
That's what I dealt with.
We cannot deal with that, folks. It's that simple. Any income tax gains or whatever are going in there, but you can't grow... There's no fee growth that you can really rely upon until we have the expectation that our income numbers may go down the next couple of years, right, because of what's happened in the last year. All our profit growth's going there.
That's it.
So that's four till...
Just line item in the budget.
Well, you've been, what, 16?
Been here a while.
Never sold them.
Oh, no. Also, you're looking at 2% to 3% at most. You're thrilled if you got 30.
Oh.
It's all stuff that we've got to look at. There's no doubt about it. No doubt about it. The numbers have to work. I mean, it's just like in the highway. And Roy's exactly right, because we've talked about this a lot. It'll be lucky if he can get through the end of the year without having to be propped up somehow, if he suddenly is fully employed in the next month.
We adopted that budget off razor thin last year because we didn't want to cut funding, and the NVH funding went down to 82% of the year before level. And we adopted it because we didn't want to short the roads any money, right? It was razor thin.
Can't do it again.
Real thin.
Can't do it again.
You can't do that. And we burned up a whole bunch of the reserve for this year and that last month.
About 70% of it.
And we're throwing more and more income tax money at the roads now. You know, we're up to 3/4 of a million dollars this year out of CED. We're only bringing in 900, folks. I mean, we're throwing everything into that, and all the public safety money's going to the public safety departments, which is where it belongs. No argument there in one bit. We've turned stuff out of that back into the general fund because the reserve in that was getting so low. This health insurance problem has got to be dealt with. It has to. Because he's right. It's not just them. It's not just the sheriff's department. It's not just the ambulance service. It's not just the highway department. Everybody looks at that salary line and sees that it's low. We don't argue. None of us here are arguing that case, right? But where are you going to squeeze down it?
We're going to have to come out of insurance.
We've got to come out of insurance. 18% last year put a hurt on a couple of things.
Yeah, we stopped a lot of stuff.
There's a lot of dancing around for a little while here, but...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.